Good evening and welcome to the St. Petersburg By Night Podcast Network. Tonight, we present to you our Werewolf the Apocalypse Chronicle Rage Across Tampa.
Welcome to another St. Pete by Night revamped production. The following is rated for mature audiences and may contain graphic themes will be distressing to some viewers. As always, we recommend you ensure the safety and wellbeing of yourself and those around you at all times. Viewer discretion is advised.
Good evening and welcome back to the St. Pete by Night Entertainment Network, where we play St. Petersburg by Night, a massive multiplayer fifth edition World of Darkness Chronicle set in the city of St. Petersburg, Florida. My name is Kent, also known as Michigan Kent on all social media. I am the lead storyteller of St. Pete by Night. And it's Tuesday, and you know what that means. It's time for Rage Across Tampa, our Werewolf the Apocalypse fifth edition chronicle, set in the city of Tampa Bay, Florida, just across the bay from St. Petersburg. We know you have a lot of offerings in the World of Darkness on Tuesday nights, and we're really, really glad you're choosing to spend your Tuesday night with us. If you are choosing to tune in live, if you're watching us in the future on video on demand or listening to us in podcast form, we're also glad you're choosing to do that. And we take no offense if you're not choosing to tune in live. So don't worry, we appreciate you either way, either way you're doing it. If you're watching something else on Tuesday nights, we totally understand. But if you are here live, we appreciate you all the more for that as well. So thank you for tuning in. If you really like what you see here, go follow St. Pete by Night on all of the social media listed in this description or that you see down below if you're watching on video to stay up to date with all things St. Pete by Night or just to see all the fun content that we are putting out for you on a regular basis. We have got some wonderful and creative individuals that are coming up with some very, very fun and humorous clips on a regular basis. And you know, you get to see some highlights from some of our ongoing games, as well as some of the inside jokes from our community, which you could join. If you join at the Discord link also listed in that clever little description down below, you could come be a part of our community. And who knows, you might find yourself in one of our many one-shot offerings that we have on a regular basis. Or you could find yourself seated at one of our many tables, some that are even still in the process of forming and starting up. And maybe, just maybe, your face could be on one of these streams one day as we have tables that are in the process of recording or in the future are going to be recording to be featured on stream as well. So come join our amazing community. We would love to have you. And you can discuss more than just the World of Darkness. You can discuss all kinds of amazing things. We would love to have you join us. Needless to say, Rage Across Tampa has been going for over a year now. This is going to be our 52nd episode, which if we had been doing them back to back to back would mean that we have been doing a year's worth of consistent episodes, which is an incredible feat that I think none of us could have predicted. But it has been a wild ride and we are grateful to those who have been going along with us. But I can't tell you that I could have possibly done this alone. It would have taken some amazing, amazing players. And I have been very fortunate to have been blessed with those amazing players. And I'm going to be giving them the opportunity to introduce themselves now. So players, take it away and introduce yourselves if you please.
Hi, everybody. I'm Champ Champagne Aiden Goodspeed, a rune of the Galestalkers, whatever you want to call me. And I will be playing Aspen Weiss, Philodoc's of the Silverfins.
Hi, everybody. I'm Nori, and I will be playing Malicious Jester, the Galliard of the Black Furies.
Hey, everybody. I'm Walks, and I will be playing Lukashaw, the Ragabash of the Shadow Lords.
Hey, everybody. I'm Preston. I play Jason Dreams and Decay Thorn, Theurge of the Bone Nars.
Champ, I literally, literally seconds before we went on the air said, "Don't you do it." Just, just, I just, I literally just said, "Don't you do it." But you did it anyways. So I am going to give that, uh, that introduction a D for dead as a doornail, which is what Aiden Goodspeed is. Anyway, let's get caught up, shall we? Our pack has been recuperating and recovering from the death of Aiden Goodspeed slowly but surely, even though Aspen, our Sept and pack leader, has been in D for denial about Aiden Goodspeed's loss and dealing with her pain in that loss, to the point that she has driven a wedge in the relationship with her longtime boyfriend and pack member, Artie, to the point that Artie has chosen to leave the pack and Sept to act as emissary to the rest of the Garu Nation and departing Tampa for the first time in his life for several months for an extended leave of absence to travel the country and hope to make amends with the rest of the Garu Nation for the damage that has been done from the sacrificing of the Cairn. But also to get some time to see to his own healing for the pain of the loss of Aiden, as Aiden was considered a brother and a best friend to Artie. So with Artie's departure, the pack finds something else to mourn. But not long after he departs, does a new arrival come in the form of Jason Dreams and Decay Thorn, a new arrival from Columbus, Ohio, a representation of the Bone Nars, represented by Rat, the patron spirit, who brought the Theurge all the way from Columbus to help aid in the woes of the Sept, to help smooth over some of the bumps in the spiritual road that this Sept has created, some of the potholes in the spiritual journey that this Sept has dug for themselves. So with a new member joining the Sept that has been, for the most part, accepted on a trial basis, at the very least, the pack sets its sights on the future and what lies ahead, primarily on a target that Charles has presented to them in the form of a hideout that a group of leeches has seemed to have holed up in, a small collective, a hive of sorts of vagabonds or rejects, those that are seeking to survive or carve out a territory in the unrest amongst the vampires and the fallout of power after Bloody Mary's destruction at the hand of, hands of this very pack. So with that all being said, everyone is trying to find their footing. Everyone is trying to find their place. And that starts with the beginning of our story tonight as Jace, or Jason Dreams and Decay, tries to find his own footing and tries to find a way to settle into his new home of Tampa, while his thoughts still remain on his old home of Columbus, Ohio, and the family and pack that he left behind. Dreams, you had a home. You had a family. You had a pack and a Sept up in Columbus. But as a Theurge, your true calling is to the spirits. And your loyalty is to Rat. So when Rat told you that you had a purpose and that purpose was in Tampa, with hesitation, of course, you agreed and you took up that calling, uprooting your life, leaving behind your loved ones. Now, you've had a few weeks to settle before introducing yourself to the rest of the Garu in the area. And in that time, you found a location to set up a new establishment, a bar, that you have slowly been in the process of creating. And now it's not as nice or as homey as the Rat's Nest, your old establishment up in Columbus, a place that you think very fondly of every single night when you go to sleep, kind of wishing you were there, especially when the humidity of Florida sets in and that hot, sticky feeling washes over you even in February. But it's not without its charm. And on this particular day, that charm takes the form of an individual you met early on after your arrival in Tampa, a transient by the name of Moses. Now, in your first interaction with Moses, he was just a man on a bench, but he was so much more than that. In your own words, I'd like you to describe that interaction with Moses and what he meant to you.
That, uh, getting to Tampa was really, really hard, being away from everything he knew. He'd never left Columbus. Uh, trying to, he helped people along the way, but, and he met some people, but there was something different about Moses. The, the way that he held himself sitting on that bench was different than how he had seen others in Tampa. Uh, the way that he was looking out at the beach, just kind of taking in everything instead of worrying about the hustle and bustle of city life, even as just a regular guy, he just seems so at one with the now. The, but the way he held himself drew Jace to him. And that's one of the reasons why he continuously just kind of thinks about him. Cause there's something more to this person. He just can't figure it out. And that's driving him nuts. As a Bone Nar, that is driving him crazy. He can't figure this guy out.
One of the greatest traits of the Bone Nar, of the Rat, is the uncovering of secrets, the digging out of knowledge. And yes, Moses is a man of many secrets. And a lot of those secrets are embedded, not just only in the wrinkles of his weathered, aged face, but in a staff that he carries of gnarled old wood that is carved with various insignias, sigils, symbols, pictograms all along the shaft. It tells a story. Now, it's nothing fancy or specific. It's nothing that you necessarily pick up at an antique shop or nothing that one might try to steal. It's very personal, clearly. But it's unique. And that story is a story that is meant to be uncovered, a secret that only one man knows. And that man is Moses. So as our story begins, we find ourselves at sunset on that very beach where you first met Moses, the boardwalk of downtown Tampa, not that far from the docks that you often call home, the place where you are looking to open your establishment. That desire for information, that story, has called you to this place more than once. And sometimes you'll find him there, but more often you won't. But you'll always, at least once a day, whether it's on your motorcycle or out for a walk, you'll pass, you'll find yourself passing by, maybe even subconsciously passing by, just to see if you can catch a glimpse if he's actually there. And on this particular day, he is. Now, he's not sitting on the bench. This time, he's sitting on a curb down by the water. He's leaned against a metal railing that is meant to protect people from walking and accidentally tipping over into the water itself. But this time, he's got his feet dangling off of the side. You can see the sandals that he usually wears placed on the concrete next to him. And his feet are actually dangling down in the water itself. His rough patched pant legs rolled up to the knees. He's got his arms propped up against the railing and his chin leaned against his wrists as he looks out at the setting sun that is setting just over the horizon on the image that is the city across the bay known as St. Petersburg, a place that you haven't ventured into yet. But you see a distant skyline just out of view. Occasionally, you can hear the splash of the water as he kicks his feet and you can see droplets of water kind of showering off ahead. His staff is propped underneath his knees, kind of spread out on both sides, almost as if it were like a swing set that he was sitting on as well on the railing. But almost like protectively, he has it beneath him so it won't roll off the side or someone won't grab it as they pass by, or just to keep somebody from tripping. But as he watches, his normally wrinkled, weathered face seems smooth, relaxed. The wrinkles not as apparent as he just peacefully lets his eyes fall half-lidded. A contented smile spread across his features, his salt and peppered beard just resting upon his wrists. And the scene is yours.
Jace will take a moment, kind of look around, then walk up behind him. You know, if you fall asleep too, like if you fall too hard, that water's gonna be a rude awakening.
Well, I don't know about all that. I think it'd be mighty refreshing.
You saying you need a bath?
Is it that time of the week already?
I can't smell you quite yet, so I think you'll be doing alright.
How you doing, Jace?
Doing alright. Um, I haven't seen you around for a bit, not that I've been really looking, but...
Yeah, I've been around. Maybe you just ain't been looking hard enough.
Maybe, maybe. You mind if I sit with you?
I never mind your company. Have a seat.
Take, take off his shoes, put him off to the side, kind of mimic the same position that he's in, kind of lean forward. So what's that over there, pointing towards the horizon?
Possibilities. Some of them coming to an end undiscovered, some of them just being born, waiting to be found. Some for me, some for you, some for others that we have yet not met.
Possibilities, the forever unknown and unwritten.
Mm-hmm.
Just the constant waiting. Moses, I'm curious. Out of all places to be, why here? Why Tampa?
Well, why not here? Why not Tampa? I mean, been a lot of places, seen a lot of things. I've walked a while. And I suppose eventually stop walking. And there are worse places to end up.
It is pretty here.
This place has a story to tell, a very interesting story. And well, aside from a few storms every year, you can't really complain too terribly about the weather. I don't have necessarily a piece of land to call my own, a roof over my head. So if I had to hunker down somewhere, why not a place where I can avoid the snow?
Um.
And I don't exactly have the, the means to get to Hawaii now, do I?
That's a long swim. You say you're in pretty good shape, though. I think you can make it and you can kick pretty hard, right?
Hmm, not that hard.
Yeah. Well, how long have you been in Tampa? I know you've stayed and walked for a while.
I'd say I probably ended up here about fifteen, twenty years ago?
So enough to kind of get the lay of the land a little bit, understand it?
Certainly. I mean, I've left and come back. I just always kind of find myself returning here. But I've been steady here for probably about the last five years. Haven't left since.
Well, what, what's Tampa really like? Away from the touristy crap, you know, the, what's Tampa like here? Like, what's the things that aren't necessarily talked about?
Oh, well, this is a city that will eat you alive. But it's also a city that will inspire you if you have the means to look for it, the desire to look for it. It's a place where some people go to die. But it's a place where some go to live. Just really means, what are you looking for from it? That's really the question. I think a lot of people come here because they don't know what they're looking for. The people who are born here often are doing everything they can to escape it. They say they want the seasons. I say, yeah, go see it for yourself. You'll be regretting those words once you're having to shovel the driveway every winter.
It sucks.
It's a strange place. It's a melting pot. Most people who live here aren't from here. And like I said, those who are from here are doing everything they can to get out of here. To many who come here, it's a vacation. To others, it's a coffin. And to some, it's a fresh start, a blank canvas. One of the things I find most special about this place is the unknown of it, the undiscovered of it. This is a place of art and of music, of sport. There's a little bit of everything here. Like I said, if you're looking for it, you can find it. But you have to look. And then sometimes you have to look really, really hard to find it. You have to be persistent. And some folks just don't have the means for that. I suppose it's one of them abilities that's lost in the generations. They don't have the attention span for it anymore.
I'd have to agree, but to an extent, I think the possibility is there for everyone. I think everyone has possibility just to drive and initiative to actually go and do it.
Well, when you get everything delivered to you instantaneously all the time, why would you go for anything that requires effort?
Yeah, that instant gratification.
Indeed.
You did mention it's places of art. Can't help but notice your staff has a lot of art carved into it. Not a lot of it correlates with each other. Want to explain? It looks, I like it a lot. I just can't figure out what that means. It's not that I'm trying to like eyeball it too much as he's staring at it. It's just, I don't understand what's going on. Like art usually speaks to people differently. This is just a bunch of jumbled mess.
Then maybe you're not looking in the right place. And I don't take it personally. Look all you like. If it was a hidden secret, I wouldn't display it so openly. It's not something I'm ashamed of.
You mind if I hold it and take a look at it?
Of course. He raises up his knees and reaches over to slide it up from underneath. And you can hear the, the wood sliding across the concrete, making that slightly grinding, but also slightly chiming noise that only wood can make. Looking over it, it is exactly like you said, confusing. In some portions of the staff, there are shapes, almost like geometric shapes. On other places, there are twisting lines and curves. On some, there are symbols that look like, almost like stick figures. It doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense, any of it. No matter how hard you try to put it together, no matter how hard you try to understand it, this would take a lot more study than you have time for the brief moments you have here, but I will give you an opportunity to try and discover something at this moment. Roll me a wits and a cult.
Anything on there that might have to do with Bane's?
No.
Okay. Can I burn a will?
Sure.
Fourth.
Something about the geometric shapes, the way they're positioned, and the arrangement of them speaks to a hidden energy or power within them. You can't source it. It's too archaic to know the source of it, but it's not guru in nature, for sure. But there is something there, there's something more to it. It's a symbology of some kind. It is not, it's not random shapes. If anything, it is runes.
Moses, did you carve these into this?
Maybe.
Take some skill with a blade in order to do something like this?
I like to whittle.
Best thing I ever made was a whistle, and even then it didn't even work right.
Well, I think we both know that's not true. You've made a great many things. You made your way here, a journey is just as much a creation as a staff.
And the journey here was something. Made some, uh, met some interesting people for sure. Met some pretty stupid people too. Uh, easy pickings for different things, but that's a different story for another time. Other side of my life. Well, it's very beautiful. I do like it a lot, and the staff back to him.
What about that project you're working on now? You're building something.
Yeah, um, hey, tell you what, it's not quite done yet. If you head I believe that's east from here, you find old rundown warehouse over there. The one with the black trim, looks really gross. In there, I'm making something. If you ever are needing a place, and you say you didn't have a roof, but if you need a place, a temporary place, and you are wanting food and drink, it's between you and I, if I'm there, I can get you a meal and something to drink, and just for you, I'll try and get you a little spot. At least you have something over your head, because it's gonna rain a lot. I haven't been here for very long, but I've heard about these weird random rain showers that just show up. And, um, I don't want to be caught out in that, so.
Well, that's how I got my last bath.
Ah, that's why you don't smell so bad. That makes sense now. But it's not done yet, but if you head that way and you are needing something, the old door, the old green one, just give it a couple wraps. If you see the motorcycle out front, I'll let you in, and I'll get you all set up.
I appreciate that, Jace. That's matter of kind to you, and if nothing else, it'd be nice to see the place, see what you've been working on.
If you make it a regular thing to be here, then when it is ready, definitely make that happen.
Of course, I'd try to come by, at least for the nice sunsets when I can. I've been venturing up to this, uh, this place up in the northeast, there's this little little neighborhood, uh, I don't know if you've heard of it, this Tampa Ministries? Up in the northeast, they do these nice little volunteer programs. I've been trying to help out up there. They got a soup kitchen they do from time to time, and I try to help out when I can. They give out free meals and sometimes a nice shower.
I've spent my time in soup kitchens on both sides, actually, um, needing food or, uh, helping out. So yeah, I'll definitely check that out.
You should. It's a, it's a nice group of folks.
I'll have to take a look at that. Is it ran by like a church, you said ministry somewhere, is it ran by some church?
It's a kind of a interesting collection of faiths. It's kind of why it appealed to me. It's not a specific faith of any sort, but all, all kinds. They don't preach to any particular one faith, but all faiths. They don't make you believe in any one given thing. They just let you believe what you want to believe, and they're there to help any in need. It's what appealed to me most, I suppose.
Do you believe in a higher purpose or anything like that?
Kindness.
Universal language.
Do unto others as you'd have done unto you. If you believe in that, well, hopefully the universe will reward you.
Usually, um, universe sometimes like to just put you down a, uh, certain paths and put you through some tests. Eventually, they pays out pretty good.
We'll tell you though, Jace, just, I know you're new to town. Things have been a little more dangerous lately. I don't know what's changed, but it's getting a little rougher at night lately. Last couple of weeks. If you knew the city, and you knew where to walk, it wasn't a problem for the last, as long as I've been here, but something's changed. It's getting a little more dangerous out on these streets, so just be careful, mind yourself, and you know, watch your back when you're out and about.
Is there, like, a lot, like, a crime going on, or are people going missing, or?
Well, I don't know. You know, with everything that's happening in the world these days, folks are getting a little more excitable, I guess, and maybe it's crime, maybe it's just, I don't know what it is, but I've been hearing some things, I've been seeing some things in the news, and you know, people talk, and I just want to make sure you're one of the good ones, Jason. I don't want to see anything bad happen to you. Tourists around here, they're usually the first targets. People that aren't from this neck of the woods, that don't know these streets as well, they stick out like a sore thumb. I don't want to see, you know, you get picked off just because you haven't had time to settle in.
I can usually go unnoticed in certain places, but I will I'll do my best about that. So I should, so in general, just be looking over my shoulder? Like, are you gonna be, should I be walking you around? Like, nothing against you, but you are like old, so.
I don't tend to stay out that late at night. I find a place and I hunker down by dark. At least lately, especially, but it's, it's fine, it's just, you know, I suggest you do the same. If you've got your place, you know, get in before too late, and just stay inside. The, uh, law enforcement's never been particularly good around here, but they've been especially negligent lately.
Gotcha.
Things have been a little more chaotic than usual.
Alright, well, I'll do my best.
Just want you to stay safe, is all.
Alright, yeah. You too, buddy. Alright, you take care.
I will. Good to see you, Jace.
It's good to see you too. He'll get up, put his shoes on, and head back to his bike.
What's going through your head as you return to your bike? And Moses goes back out to looking at the water, feet splashing back.
Trying to figure out what the runes meant on the staff, and the whole bit about possibilities and the what these, uh, he meant by the future being untold, what all that kind of brought together, and why he keeps coming back. Why there's these ties that he hasn't brought up yet.
Mysteries and more mysteries. And Moses is a particularly mysterious individual. But when you've got such a juicy mystery as this, it makes the sting of missing home sting just a little bit less. With that, we transition to our next scene. Aspen, you wanted to meet with Lucas to follow up on his activities, his plans to look into his underground, what he's planning to do to set up the underground. You've been in contact with Matthias about his legitimate operations and his plans for the fallout, especially now that things are kicking into high gear with the death of Marius and Bloody Mary, and with Bateman having seemed to have gone into hiding for the most part, now it seems like things are having to move a lot quicker. But with Matthias out of town getting reinforcements, now your focus can shift more to Lucas. So you call Lucas to meet, where are you meeting?
Uh, I'd probably just call and ask if I could pick him up, and I would drive the direction of the biker bar.
So as you pick up Lucas, you're driving in your car, a vehicle you haven't used in quite some time, as you've been used to riding in Regina. How does that feel for Aspen? You haven't, your car's kind of gone unused and is rather dusty and probably cluttered with stuff. How does it feel being in your car again for the first time in a while?
There's an aspect of, you get used to driving Regina, you don't think about putting the keys in the ignition, you don't think about putting it in reverse, you just kind of go, you can let your mind wander, um, and she finds herself getting in the car, almost forgetting to put the keys in the ignition, and it's like, uh, like a sinking feeling, like a heart drop feeling. Um, but then you put the keys in the ignition, you start it, you get your breath back in your chest, and you just keep going. Um, but then you find yourself getting lost in thought while you're driving, which is dangerous. And you shake yourself back.
Yeah.
You shake yourself back.
A couple of times of being honked at, especially at intersections when you don't go after point one seconds of the light being green, you find yourself finally getting focused enough to the point that you arrive to pick up Lucas. Now, Lucas, have you officially moved to the Cairn at this point? I know there was some talk about you potentially moving out of your apartment, or are you still staying at your rented place for the time being? Or where would you ever pick you up?
Uh, yeah, somewhere on the road, um, near the biker bar in an exit point where he came out of the Cairn. He probably still has some things left at his apartment above, uh, Danielle's garage. Um, but he is more or less full-time at the Cairn now.
Okay. So after being told where to pick him up, you pick him up alongside the road, not that far from the Cairn, but on the way to the biker bar. And that's where our scene begins, as you pull up to the side of the road where Lucas is waiting. Lucas, Aspen arrives in a vehicle. Aspen, go ahead and describe what this car looks like.
Um, it is a Ford Taurus, it's old, it's a beater. You look at it, some of the paint has chipped off. Um, you can tell on the, like, side where it's a little, it's a little rusty, not like it's going to break down at any moment, but you can tell it's had wear and tear, like it's a hand-me-down of a hand-me-down that you buy at one of those, uh, places where you make payments every two weeks instead of once a month, you know? Um, but she's paid it off and she's had it forever, and she doesn't see the need of getting another car, so it's just, it's just a little beater that does what it needs to do.
It probably still has Idaho license plates too, doesn't it?
Yep.
So yeah, you're seeing this car probably for the first time since she hasn't had the need to drive it in, since you've met her.
Lucas will open the door and kind of look down first at her, and then toss his bag into the backseat and get in and shut the door. Well, it appears, uh, we have similar tastes in automobiles. That's a new thing.
It does enough to get me around, and that's all I really need.
That's fair.
Not the luxury car type, that's more of a Charles thing.
That is, yes, more of a Charles thing, I was gonna say that, for sure. Alright, what's up? Let's go for a ride.
Yeah, and she'll pull out. Wanted to get with you and ask you some stuff about your project you've been working on.
Fair. Well, I think I may have tracked down a, an entry point. Um, I'm gonna reach out and make a tentative contact with that here relatively soon, um, so we will see how that goes once that conversation is over, I'll have a better idea of what's going on. Tampa's a very complicated place. There's a lot going on, and there are some strange ties to other places that I want to be careful of, stuff Spud told me about. I don't want to piss off the wrong people until I'm ready to piss off the wrong people. You know, I'm good at that.
That's kind of your forte, but that's why I leave that to you. Um, what kind of people? What kind of people? Last I knew, you said it wasn't going to be as easy as you had initially thought. Um, and we haven't really gone into detail since then, so what kind of people are we looking at? What's your entry point? What's kind of the play-by-play?
There are a couple of entry points, and in the central northern areas of Tampa, you have a lot of street gangs up there, a lot of individual territories, a lot of animosities, some alliances here and there. Downtown Tampa, hmm, really haven't probed too much there, probably under the purview of the leeches still, so I'm waiting to make an inroad there until later, but I think a long time ago, there used to be much more of a presence of certain more honorable, organized crime individuals. Since that's kind of fallen out of fashion, uh, those people have also fallen out of grace, so that is a potential entry point in finding one of those lost, forgotten groups, and making them an offer they can't refuse.
Okay, and how are we avoiding potential cross- Okay, and how are we avoiding potential crossing with um, other people in the business?
I think one of the big things that I want to push with them is I want to stay away from drugs. I think that if I don't put my hands into any of those pots. Then I think for the time being, we will be safe. Which is why I think I want more of a refined group of people to deal with because. That might not be something they're very interested in working with, but. Um, that's all going to depend on territory and what. The party I decide to throw my hat in with needs to remove from the board to make themselves more powerful.
Okay, I feel like you're being vague, which, I mean, but. Where do you plan on finding your entry point then? If you're not doing drugs, that's going to be your, um. I guess gateway, not to make a pun. It's gonna be your gateway into the more lower crime. Then you start getting into um, corporate crime, that's gonna not put you where you need to be. So how are you planning on getting into these spaces without starting with drugs? Cause that's usually your foot in the door.
Well, your. Your friend Matthias has gracefully offered the uh, use of his shipping area. So import-export might be something that we could do.
Of?
We'll see. All kinds of people that need to be moved from here and there. There's all kinds of things that need to be moved from here and there. I, I, Aspen, how much do you really want to know about all this? Do, do you want plausible deniability or do you want your hands in this?
I think at this point, it's best for me to have my hands in everything we're doing.
Okay, then here's what I plan on doing. I plan on finding a defunct crime family, making an offer to them to find their nearest ri- their nearest rival, their nearest problem. The thing that could bring them up. They give me that name of that person and I make that person disappear. Once that's done, they move into that territory, take over their business and continue to operate that. I won't be in control of them, but they will owe me substantial favors.
Your plan is to be a hitman for this family?
Uh, not for them, but in general, yes.
Hitman for hire for said family?
It's a living.
I, I see the basis of your thought process. But I do still believe that you're gonna need more low-level crimes than just hitman for hire. That's not gonna get you very far. Once you've made your use, you've made someone disappear. They have no more use for you and you make it their problem, they'll just make sure you disappear. That's kind of the cycle, right?
Well, it's not often about how you do it, it's about the message you send when you do it. Fear can be a very motivating factor with people.
Okay, and I mean, don't get me wrong, Lucas, I think you can be very intimidating at certain points. But uh. I don't know if intimidating and speaking to others and all of that is really your forte.
You're not wrong. You're not wrong. I probably will have to lean on Jester for some things. That is a fact. Let me figure out exactly what I need her for and then I will bring her in. I'm not saying I'm gonna venture out on this alone. We've already had this conversation. That still stands.
Right, but as I've thought more about it, Jester is technically. A fugitive, right? Um, so having her in those spaces could be a benefit to us, yes, but also could be a big detriment. And I have a plan that I'd like to talk to her about and I don't know if she could do both.
Yeah, she's got some heat on her. That could be complicated, especially if they figure out who she is. Uh, they may not want to deal with me or her, but. There might be some who could view that as advantageous, something that they could manipulate for their own ends. And if we let them believe that. We can use that to our advantage.
And you've talked to Jester about this?
Well, once again, I, I don't, I don't know what these people want yet. I haven't made contact with them yet.
So you know the family, then?
It might still be around. I'm gonna go find out here shortly.
Okay, well, perfect place to start. Why don't we talk to the bikers?
Yeah, we could talk to the bikers.
At the very least, they have ideas of what's going on around here, more than we do, more in those spaces. I think they've become uh, good with Jester and good with us in a way that we could use them to our advantage or to your advantage.
It's fair, yeah.
But uh, I would definitely look at uh, talking to Jester about that. Because I don't know how much she wants to be involved in those spaces with that potential as being. Used as blackmail potentially by people within those spaces.
We'll see. I, I don't, I'm, I'm just thinking of contingencies. I'm looking ahead, I'm planning ahead. I'm looking for the ways that things could go wrong. That's what I do. So, yes, I still want to use her. I think that there's infinite value she brings to the table in this endeavor. Um, but I have to see the pieces before I move them around on the board.
And what, what is this family?
Back in the sixties, seventies, uh, in Tampa, there wasn't nearly as much street gangs here. There was a family called the Trafficante family. They were linked to other crime families. They just happened to be the most dominant one down here. So. When everything kind of folded, the eighties, nineties, when the mob kind of got swept up by the feds. They didn't really catch much heat, but they also couldn't really operate anymore. From what I've been able to look up and uh, take it as you can, uh, the original boss died of. I guess natural causes. But there's still some people around in Tampa who were originally members of that family. If we can bring that family back up, get it back on its feet, get it doing what it does best. That's a significant amount of prestige. And skill and knowledge on how these things work that we don't necessarily have.
And you have confidence that when they are eventually brought back to a place of prestige, they won't deal you out?
They'll shake hands with the devil. And if they choose to go back on that deal, then I'll take my piece, my pound, if you will.
That could potentially be more of a problem test than a benefit.
Maybe, but this is who we're dealing with.
I would say, as I said, use the bikers, get some information, figure out what we're looking at. Before we make any big moves.
Well, yeah, I mean, just reaching out and talking is talking. Uh, I'm not gonna guarantee that, you know, in a few days, I'll go visit this person and. Uh, we will be shaking hands and immediately deep into business together. Like, this has to be something that, that develops over time. This is not gonna be fast. And I'm not gonna let it go fast because. Hungry people like to eat and they're gonna want to eat quick. And if I can feed them at a right rate, that they'll understand that we're not just amateurs. That we're, we mean business.
Okay. You're not gonna do anything too nefarious, correct?
I'll try not to.
Within the borders of what we stand for, yes?
Uh, yes, it's one of the reasons why I don't want them involved in drugs. I don't want them involved in human trafficking. There's a lot of things I don't want them involved in. If I find out they are, then, well, you know, I'll handle things the way that we handle things.
Good, because when you said trafficking, guns are one thing, people are a different story.
Yeah, fair, absolutely. And believe it or not, these people probably have a very good sense of community and honor. And they're gonna want me to take out other scumbags. So altruistically, even if I am doing a thing that makes some people squeamish, I'm still taking out bad guys.
Taking out bad guys for bad guys is altruistic?
Yeah, sure. We're not adding to the problem, we're subtracting.
Well, you're taking away power to give to another power. It doesn't subtract, it just. Goes somewhere else.
Well, you're still focusing it into one person, so if you take out that person, if you have to.
Keep me informed and don't make any big moves without talking to all of us.
Fair, absolutely.
I mean, I may not know about the crime. Organization, but I do know quite a bit about crime, so. It's kind of part of my shtick. It's my job to know.
It's what you do. It, they would probably love to have some kind of lawyer, but I don't think you want to get involved in the things that they want to get involved in, so. Yeah.
No, my need for information of what's going on with that is to keep you all safe and make sure we're not causing more issues, not. To get my hands dirty.
Speaking of which, what are you doing for the whole lawyer thing? What is, what is the end goal for that? What's the purpose?
Well, I think it's twofold at least. Um, this is something I've wanted to do for a long time.
Okay.
It's what I've worked for, for a very long time, so just having that goal as like a personal goal is always good. But I think having a space around that, especially with Bateman. And potential you being, and potentially getting yourself into hot water. I think it's advantageous that we have a lawyer around and potentially too. So I think that's gonna help us.
You're gonna like, go after any big companies and break any big cases and, you know? All that stuff you see on TV?
I mean, if it needs to happen, of course. I think Hine Point is a potential where my expertise could come into play. I don't know yet. I have no idea what's going on over there.
Yeah, I haven't been back there, so, no. It wasn't a pleasant experience the last time I was there anyway, so.
We have a lot of diverging things happening right now and we've just got to keep them all in order to make sure we don't take a step back. And have them back, have us back on our heels.
As long as we are looking at the things coming and anticipating. What we can do to mitigate the risks. What do you think everybody else is saying about us?
In what situation? Regards to what?
And us? That this, this thing we're doing?
I think people, certain people are coming around saying what we're doing here. Uh, there's a lot they don't know still. The, I haven't gotten to speak with anyone about Karen's situation. So that's going to be another bump in the road, I'm sure. With our already rocky waters with the nation, it's going to cause. Well, more waves, right? Um, but I, I think we can get past it. I think, and Matthias is willing to work with us, he's sending us reinforcements and now we have uh. What's his name? Dream Decay, right?
Jay, Jason, Jason, it was Jason. I think it was Jason, yeah. He seemed fine. I'm just asking, I'm concerned, you know, you can't do it all, right? You understand that.
I, I would understand. I have you guys to help out with that. I just have to oversee and make sure everything goes smoothly.
At your cost? At whose cost?
I mean, at no cost to me. I'm doing what I need to be doing. Making sure everything runs smoothly and I think with so many things going on. We've got to make sure it's all on track and if there's any weaving pieces, we've. We've all gotta be on the same page.
No cost to you, huh?
It is working out so far, so.
You are a lawyer, aren't you?
Damn good one, if I don't, if I do say so myself.
Hopefully, we don't have to test that. Alright, well, then. Um. You know what you need to know, um. I will touch base with the bikers and at least get some kind of information on them, from them. And then I will go from there.
Well, it's a good, good thing we're heading in that direction right now, isn't it?
Pre-planned, huh?
I'm efficient. It's what I do.
Lo and behold, at this point, the car does pull. Outside in the gravel driveway of a long rectangular, completely solid black building with boarded over windows. Painted black completely. There are several bikes on the gravel driveway and loud thumping heavy metal music can be heard even outside. Playing from within the building as the car comes to a stop in the driveway. As you climb out of the car and make your way towards the entrance. You arrive just in time as the door comes flying open and two bikers grappling come. Moving out of the entryway with Sticky Ricky, a large, massive, bulbous gentleman. Holding both of the bikers by the collars and dragging them, saying, take it outside. And just throws them both out into the parking lot. Hey, Pinecone, he says as he looks over at Aspen.
Mr. Ricky, nice to see you.
Come on in. Turns around and holds the door open for both of you as you make your way in. What you doing around here? What can I do for you?
Well, we were hoping to get a drink, number one. Uh, number two, we would like to talk to the best person. Uh, with information of the goings-on, just around here, if you know what I'm saying.
We're talking to the best person, but with the information of the goings-on, you'd probably want to talk to the bartender, uh. Larry! At the bartend, at, at the bar, you see a bartender who's quickly whipping up drinks. Uh, a skinny whip-thin individual who's wearing a kind of a recruit vest. Is quickly at work that's mixing drinks and by the movement of their hands, they're moving almost lightning fast. But you can tell from the sweat on their brow that they're working so much harder than they probably should be. Trying to keep up with everything that they're doing. You got customers! They go, okay! And they kind of try to finish up the drink they're working on and slide it down the bar and one of the other bikers grabs it. What can I get you?
Look over to Lucas.
Beer. Your choice.
Okay.
Two of those and information when you're not sweating bullets.
Well, that beer's easy. Uh, what do you want to know? Reaches down into a cooler and grabs two beers and pops the top, setting them on the bar.
Prospect, what do you know about the old crime families in Tampa? Prospect, what do you know about the old crime families in Tampa? Mover and shaker types?
Well, uh, been a, been a while since there's been any of those types around here. You know, you hear stories, but they've been out of business for a while. It's been mostly small-time stuff, if you weren't running with the cartel. You know, I mean, there's been us, and there's been a few like us that do our type of thing, but unless you're running with the, uh, the big wigs over in the cartel, it's been, you know, no bueno, so to speak, with family business. Uh, although, there was a little bit of the organized business here, I want to say, two years ago? Family from up north came down for a little bit. They were causing some beef, a little bit of territory dispute. Looked like there was a family moving in, but they didn't stay long, moved out shortly after. Apparently, there was some business happening over in Tampa, or over in St. Pete. Don't know the details on that, though.
Do you know somebody I could get in contact that might know anything about that?
He kind of gestures you close. Well, you didn't hear it from me, but there's a deli, Fabrizio's. Makes up a good sandwich. If you ask for what's on the special, what's the special of the day, you order it with no pickles, Fabrizio might have some answers for you. But it's gonna cost extra. He's from the family, the old family. He would know more about that stuff than we would.
How much extra?
How much you willing to pay? Just depends on how much you want to know. You know how those types work.
Okay. Maybe he works in trade.
Can't speak to any of that, but they do business. We've kind of worked with them before, mostly just protection stuff for them before. Little bit of transportation, messages, the like. Nothing too serious. They don't want to make a name for themselves. They prefer to stay quiet. Don't need to get any trouble headed their way, especially after they heard a big New York family came into town. They didn't want to get noticed about all that, but if you make a convincing enough case and have the money to back that up, they'll probably talk. Or something else to offer in kind.
Yeah.
We'll say this, though. The cartel does have a strong grip around here. There's a reason that the street gangs only get so big. There's a reason that the families keep their heads down. There's a reason they don't want to get noticed. We get around because we are bigger than just this state. That's why we get to survive. They are chum. The cartel is sharks. We're allowed to be here. That's why we're here. And we don't get in any of their business. We have nothing to do with them. That's why we're here.
And if you were to expand throughout Tampa, would that be a problem?
Depends on what we do. We get big enough, they're gonna notice and they're gonna have questions. But a few more chapters in Florida might go unnoticed. But bigger in Tampa depends on how big. We've had a couple of guys make a couple of bad decisions around here. We never heard from them again. And we never asked why. And there's a reason for that. They broke the rules, our rules. And one of our rules is no drugs. And I, I'm sure you can understand why.
Good rule.
Has to be.
So turn and look at Aspen. This is part of it.
Getting information isn't gonna hurt anything. But there is the potential that this could become a big, big problem for us. And if it gets that far, we stop it before then. So all we're doing now is getting information. And if you need to pay for it, if you've got a best friend, you can go grovel to, I'm sure.
Try to work out a trade deal before I do that, but I will keep that in mind. But, fair. Yes, information is more important right now than making any handshakes right off the bat, so. I'm sure I will be presented some kind of offer, but I will not agree to anything until we have a conversation.
I'll tell you guys this. You guys are good with us because you guys were good with Ryder. They went a long way. Jester stuck around, made some good friends. That went a long way, especially after Ryder was gone. The other people you go see, they're not gonna have that kind of loyalty. They can be bought. Our loyalty isn't for sale. You earned that. Their loyalty is, and the cartel has deep pockets, and I mean really, really deep pockets. So even if you think you can impress them, even if you think you've got their that they're on your side. If the sharks want you gone, they can turn anybody on you.
And I think my question would be how how much are you guys willing to expand in these spaces that have become empty so that nobody else can?
We're tired of seeing our place go to shit. We're tired of getting pushed around. That's what Ryder was helping us stop doing. It's slow for a reason. I think that's why he got a little impatient. I can't speak for the others. You might lose a few of them. They might move to other chapters if they get uncomfortable, but to some of us, this is our home. And the way things are going lately, especially in the grand scheme of things, I think that there's a fight coming that even extends beyond just Tampa. And I think that we all have to be ready for it, no matter what. So speaking for just myself, I'll do whatever it takes to protect me and mine. But I'm also not going to go recklessly into trouble.
Much better than your hitman idea. Just saying. And I think Jester would be safer and more on board with this option.
Okay. I don't I don't want to tangle with the cartels. Not yet. Um, but in reality, they are something that is not in alignment with what we want or what we do. So to me, they're still considered an enemy, but I also understand pragmatically, I don't want to pick a fight I can't win. So we get in contact with these people, we work on moving into the spaces, and however that looks is however it looks. Starts small. Find the hole in the armor, and then go through.
Go get yourself a sandwich. Go from there.
Do like a good sandwich.
With a direction in mind, and next steps to be taken, we transition to our next scene. Jester. You're in Charles's apartment. You're sitting on the couch, a copy of Alexander Dumas's classic, The Three Musketeers, open in your hands. Charles sits in an armchair nearby, a copy of the same book, Three Musketeers, however written in French, in his hands. Now, he's a lot further along in the book than you are, because you have been staring at the same page, the same paragraph for probably about forty-five minutes now, reading over the same sentence over and over and over again. Because despite your request to be educated, to help you become a better writer, to help you get into higher learning, you can't help that your mind wanders with everything that's happened, especially over the past couple of weeks. With Artie's departure, with Aspen's everything, with Aiden. It doesn't take long for you to notice that Charles has stopped reading and is staring at you. Something wrong?
Can't concentrate.
Not enough sword fighting for you?
Wait, isn't this the one with the sword fighting? If I remember, like-
Yes, that's why I'm confused.
No, no, I'm just my mind's on a lot of other things. And
Well, we're not gonna get any work done with your mind on other things, so why don't we talk about it? He closes the book and sets it on the end table next to him.
Want to close the book, set it down? I don't even know where to begin.
The beginning is usually a good place to start, like "Once Upon a Time." Or "It Was the Best of Times, It Was the Worst of Times." Or "Concerning Hobbits" is one of my favorites.
I think I know where that third one is from, obviously, but not the second one anyways. Um. I I don't know how to reach Aspen.
What do you mean? She has a cellphone.
She's avoiding me. Every time I ask her to go out or talk, especially talk about anything that's not business, um, she deflects, she misdirects, and she avoids. And it's not good. It's not good for her, it's not good for the pack. I mean, Artie's gone, so obviously, it's not good for the pack.
He's off doing emissary duties. It's very good for the pack. We need to make better connections.
That was totally added on. Artie left because Artie left because he's not dealing with Aiden's death well, and Aspen pushed him away instead of helping him, because she doesn't, she's she's avoiding even talking about Aiden.
You do not believe she is processing his passing well?
No, no, not at all. She is not processing his passing at all. Well, no, she's avoiding it completely. And she basically-
She's not speaking with you about it.
No, she wasn't speaking with Artie about it. Artie came to her, saying he was having trouble, and she told him to deal with it on his own. And so he left. And on top of Ryder being gone and missing Aiden, I, I am feeling really lonely at this point. Thought we would be able to grieve Aiden as a pack, but that's not happening.
I understand. Grief is grief is an interesting thing, a difficult thing. A difficult thing. I believe it is something that we are taught. Not something that we. Are born with. We have to learn how to grieve. I know I told you once. A little bit about my family.
A little bit?
Most guru. They aren't born to other guru. You know this, most know this, it is not a genetic thing. Some believe it once was. And in some lines, it is. In my line. It was. For many generations. Guru were born. One after another, after another. Fathers, daughters. Like a royal line.
Which would make you a prince.
We've been over this, yes.
Go on princeling.
Something happened some time ago. And the. Line started to break, started to weaken. Less and less were being born. Any children that were being born, if they made it to term, were coming out human. Or Galen. The pressure to have a guru child was mounting. Not from. My grandfather. He was and is a good man. But from the tribe. The tribe expected perfection. Held our line to a higher standard. The lineage must continue. And so. My mother, a Galen. Was bred.
Wait, what do you mean bred?
I think you understand what I mean.
So, did she even get to choose? Who she was with?
To a point. Suitors were presented. From a select. Few. She got to choose from those that were selected. She wasn't the only daughter. There were also sons and they also were bred. When she. Got pregnant. And the kin, kin seekers determined that she was pregnant with a guru. The tribe was very excited. So excited, in fact, that it was determined that when I was born, I must be taken into training immediately. I knew of my mother and father. But I did not know my mother and father. So when they passed. I did not know how to mourn them. And I still don't.
Did you ever see them?
At familial gatherings. But usually from a distance.
Did they know who you were?
They knew of me. But I was guru, I was. Better than.
Not better than.
I agree. If there's one thing I've learned. From my time with this sept, this pack. It is the importance of the connections that you are forming and have formed.
Why do you uphold what they taught you so much? Yeah, it was all you ever knew once, but was Mathias a part of it?
No. I mean. He was indirectly. Like a black sheep. A distant relation.
That actually makes me like him more, but keep going.
I actually believe that's why he. Chose me to take me away from it. To show me something else.
How long have you been working for him? With him?
I have gone on several assignments with him when needed. On and off for these past five years or so. But I always would return back to the rest of the family when the assignment was concluded.
Why?
It was my duty.
But you believe in what he's trying to do?
Now more than ever.
So does that mean you're not going back?
I don't really have a choice now, do I? What would be the point?
I mean, you could still go back while you're alive, just, you know. Afterwards.
There's nothing really to go back to.
I'm glad you think that because. What they did to your family and to you should never happen to any child. Any family.
I don't hate them for what they did. When you are looking down the barrel of an apocalypse. When you have been taught. Your entire existence. To fight. This fight. And you're being told you're losing. You're being shown you're losing. You're watching your king fall. You're seeing your line fail. Desperate times, desperate measures. We are still part human. And humans are prone to error.
It didn't help though?
It brought me here. Gave me the skills to survive.
Do you just want to survive? Is that it?
Not anymore.
Okay. So you want to start living?
I suppose I do, yes.
Good, because you know, a long time ago, you told me. That you exist so that nobody had to be like you anymore, but you don't have to be like that anymore. So maybe you should stop, start embodying the nation you want to see succeed.
I'm not sure I'm doing a very good job after tying my soul to a tree, but. I think I see your meaning.
Yeah, well. Do you regret it?
Not yet.
Fair, fair.
Ask me when my ass is full of splinters. I believe that was a joke.
I know it was a joke. We'll work on it, we'll work on it. The best advice I received recently was. Start living every day like it's. The last one you have. If we're going to be forever guardians as trees when we die, then we have to make the most of. What we have living. As much as fighting for Gaia and. Enjoying life. So. Is there anything you ever really wanted to do? Any. Non-business trips you wanted to take, any things you wanted to experience?
You're going to laugh at me. And I do not like being made fun of.
You're not used to it by now? This happens on a daily basis.
I can ignore it usually, but this is particularly vulnerable.
Okay, I promise I won't laugh.
I've never had a birthday party. In fact, I don't know what day my birthday is.
Oh. Did you want to have it on your birthday? Or did you want to make up your own birthday since you don't know your actual birthday? Some people do that, especially those in the, uh, adoption circles. I've done a little bit of research on it.
I suppose it would be prudent to know what day my actual birthday is. For the purposes of knowing the moon and alignments and whatnot, but.
We can work on that.
I just have never had a birthday party. With the balloons and the cake and I have seen them on television programs and movies. And they look.
What did you like?
Fun.
They are fun. What did you like most about them?
Everyone seemed happy. And they were celebrating. That person's life. They were happy that person was born. The only reason anyone has been happy I was born was because. The line would continue.
It's not true. I'm happy you were born. And not about any stupid werewolf line.
Also, I want to go to Disney World.
Cool, we can do that.
That would be fun.
Let's go Disney World, we'll make a day of it, a weekend even. I'm sure they'll be fine without us for a couple of days, right?
Although I'm pretty sure the mouse is the worm, but yes, I still want to go.
Oh my god. You might be right.
We can excuse it before we destroy it.
Okay.
Know thy enemy.
Right.
I see your concern for Aspen. I had spoken with her and. I had assumed she was. Trying to use. Leadership. To move forward because she had processed her grief, but it appears that she has been. Denying herself the opportunity to grieve. One must still grieve while leading. You can move forward while still remembering. And holding on to what you. and holding on to what you left behind.
Yeah. It's just gonna, I think it's just gonna be very slow. Have to figure out how. Think I saw a crack. Maybe I'll just try to contact her for a business talk. And go from there.
I also have an idea, but I will let you do yours first.
You wanna talk about it, or you're gonna keep it to yourself?
We shall see. Perhaps yours is enough.
Mm-hmm, you're gonna put it under your poker face. Okay, hey. Fine, I'll wait.
Do you feel better now?
Yes, I feel better now. Thank you.
You should keep reading.
Various sword fighting in this, yes.
All for one.
One for all.
As Charles reaches down and picks up his book, he smiles. It is a closed-lipped smile, but it is soft and genuine. And there's a little bit of a color in his cheeks. He looks over the edges of the book at Jester before resuming his reading. What's going through your mind as you pick up your book?
He may not hate them, but I am kind of angry at that tribe and what they did to him. No child deserves that. Desperation or not. That just... It's terrible. And I need to figure out when his birthday is.
Okay. We transition to our final scene of the first act. We find ourselves outside of a deli several days later. It is a small midtown deli. One would find it very nondescript, a place that you would pass by most of the time if you didn't come as a destination location. It would be easily mistaken for a New York deli that you would pop into. You can even see rolls of sausages hanging in the window. It has Fabrizio's painted on the glass of the window, and it even has a halogen sign that hangs just outside. It's one of many businesses in this strip mall. The DeLucas, you've come for a very distinct purpose to this destination. And while there are several other businesses in this strip mall, the two adjoining businesses next to it, one is a barber, and one appears to be a, a place for, uh, like a cobbler, a place to get your shoes resold and stuff like that. They also seem to be most likely owned by other members of an Italian family, but both of those establishments are by appointment only, and they are currently closed. As you walk in to the deli, there's a chime of a bell that rings as the door opens. There's a long glass counter with various meats and cheeses in the display itself. Uh, there's also, you know, prepackaged goods on the right side, and it's just a long aisle that moves down with shelves in between and then another aisle on the other side. You could see that there are a couple of butchers and employees on one side, and that there's a, a swinging door that leads into a back room behind the counter, all the way down at the end of the counter itself. But as you walk in, a gentleman greets you, wiping his hands off on an apron. Hey, what can I get you?
What's good?
We, we got anything you need? We got sandwiches, we got pre-sliced meat.
What's the, uh, what's the special?
Oh, the special? Well, our special today is a, uh, corned beef on rye. Cream cheese, mustard, pickle.
Tell you, they, uh, I'm from Chicago, but they tell me nobody makes a sandwich, nobody makes a hero like, uh, like the New Yorkers, so, uh, why don't I get a special, uh, with no pickles? And, uh, uh, you could get Fabrizio to whip that up for me? That would be perfect.
Yeah. Special no pickle, you got it. Hey, Fabrizio! One special, no pickle. He calls to the back. A moment later, the swinging door pushes open, and you see, uh, an older man, probably in his early fifties, thinning gray hair atop his head, same kind of apron, kind of poke his head out and gesture with a hand and kind of two fingers gesturing you back. As you make your way to the back, by the end of the counter, there's kind of like a swinging little half-door that you push through to get into behind the counter and in through those swinging double doors into the back room. As you walk into the back room, you're greeted by two large men who immediately stop you, telling you to spread your arms for a quick pat down. As they pat you down, they check to make sure you're not armed before passing you along over to a table. Now, this table is in the middle of clearly a large butcher's workshop. You can see slabs of beef hanging off the side, like whole sides of cow, chickens, a large steel table, and blood on the floor. A butcher's block with a large meat cleaver stuck into it, and the same little old man in his early fifties with the thinning gray hair standing by the butcher's block, picking up the cleaver and hacking a side of beef. Special no pickles.
Special no pickles.
Been a long time since anybody's asked for that. Who are you?
You can call me L for now. That's not some weird mysterious thing. Let's just keep our, uh, conversation at acquaintance level. I think that's probably the best place for us.
Well, L, you knew the right thing to say, so that tells me you talked to some people. Some people who know the right things to say. And if they were nice enough to tell you the right things to say, you either got it by force or you got it because they liked yous. And I'm hoping it's the latter and not the former. Because if you made someone squawk to get that information, that means there are some people that don't need to be known things in our protocols of gods to be changing. So which was it, L? Friends or foes?
I'll be completely honest with you, I'm not the type of person that makes friends very easily, but I didn't squeeze it out of anybody. I just appreciate security as much as you appreciate security, so other people know that about me.
Fair enough. Wipes his hands off on his apron, leaving smear of blood across the front. Well, L, my time is very valuable. As you can see, we're very busy here. But you earned yourself a few minutes. What can I do for you?
Tampa's not really what it used to be, is it?
You're telling me.
Yeah. I mean, even recently, things are shaken up. A couple years ago, things shook up. A couple decades ago, things shake up. It's just, it's the pattern of things. You and I both know that. But I can say, for me, I'm not really happy with the way things shook out and are currently shaking out in Tampa. I don't think those are the right people that need to be doing things.
I don't disagree. But I also don't think I have the means to do anything about that, and looking at yous, you don't have the means to be doing anything about that either. Unless you have a, a tank in your back pocket that you ain't telling me about, and no, I don't wanna see you how it's, uh, that's not the kind of business I run here.
It's fair. No, you're not wrong. I think, yeah, you and, uh, yours have kind of been pushed out, and I feel like that's a disservice to you.
Tell me about it. When the DeLucas came into town two years ago, they came stomping through here like they owned the fucking place. No respect for the way things were. Might as well pissed on the ashes of my family.
What did they come here for?
Oh, apparently one of their princes just came down here and got herself killed like a spring break dame.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
But you know, that happens all the time in these parts.
It's...
Might as well be on the state flag.
Yeah. Here's a question. If I did had the means, or if I do have the means, or an ability, or the wherewithal to make a difference, what would that look like to you?
It's awful big talk. I'd need some proof. Something to show me that it's not just talk for me to believe you. But what would it look like to me? I guess it would start with a little bit of retribution. See, I don't like when others come and bloody my nose. I understand that things aren't the way they were. I understand that we aren't the family we were, but respect is still respect. We never went away, we just quieted down. Business is still business, so... They walked down here. They scraped their shoes on our carpet. Didn't even have the decency to say hello. I'm not even saying we would've gotten in their way. Would've stopped them from doing what they did, I get it. One of theirs got got. There's something to be said for that. We don't even have business in St. Pete. We don't care what happens across the bridge. We're not that big, we don't have that reach, that's cartel territory. They wanted to go toe-to-toe with the cartel, that's none of my business. I don't care about that. In fact, that all just made things more difficult around here. But they didn't observe the old ways. No decency, no respect. So, L, what it would look like to me? If you have the pull you say you have, if you have the ability you say you have, bloody their nose. New York. The DeLuca family. I'm sure you don't mind travel. You head up there, you make their life a little less good. Doesn't tie back to me or mine. Just an inconvenience, doesn't have to be anything too problematic, but enough that they know that something wasn't appreciated. If it's enough that I can hear about it, one way or another, that will get my attention. Then, maybe then, we can talk about some local business. Because that can show me you have reach, that can show me you have talent. But that also won't have the blowback that local business could have. Cause I don't need trouble coming to my front door. New York's far enough away. I don't see any repercussions coming this way. They made a deal, the DeLucas and the cartel, they're not coming back here anytime soon. They'd have no reason to come back here. They'd probably think it was one of their local problems acting up.
Think we could work something out in that department? On a secondary note, to get you and your people back on their feet, what does that number look like?
Well, business ain't what it used to be. These days, it's a lot harder to get away with things, although what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing lately is true. The city's coming into a state of disorder. Although, you watch the news, this country's coming into a state of disorder.
You're not wrong.
I'm not willing to go near drugs. That's a non-starter. We gotta stay off cartel property as long as possible until we have any chance. I think you're no idiot, and you know that you don't bloody the nose of the cartel.
No.
We're too close to their turf, and they got lots of boats and planes. But guns, guns we could do. Although they've been getting into guns, small stuff wouldn't be too difficult to move. If we're talking cash, it's a half a mil, be a good start.
Okay. It's a reasonable number, from a reasonable man.
I'm a realistic and pragmatic individual, if nothing else.
Sure, you have a question or two.
Why me? Why here? Why now? If you're looking to get into the game, there are much better and more appetizing places. If you're looking to get into the game, there are much better and more appetizing places. Why not go to the cartel yourself? They're always looking to recruit.
Like you said, I don't do drugs. I don't like working in that area. It feels wrong to me. So, there's a moral confliction there, too. Also, like you said, things are destabilized right now. And I'm an opportunist. I don't want what you have. I want to make that very clear. But I want a good friend.
You don't want what I have, what do you want? What's all this for?
If I need something, and not money, and not any kind of power, or territory, or anything like that, if I need a favor, just like if you would need a favor, that we scratch each other's backs. It may be something that seems odd. I may ask questions about things going on. Simple stuff. We start there.
So you don't want money? You don't want power? You want, what, information? And a favor from time to time? Forgive me if it sounds too good to be true.
I have my own things that I deal with that you definitely don't want to be a part of. Trust me on that. And a friend is good to have. Just like you need somebody that has a far reach and is exceptionally capable. That would be, that would be your friend in me.
Well, we'll see. For now, it's just talk. I can't even be sure you're not just one of them trying to catch me, making a bad deal, so you can rat me out and stab me in the back.
Yeah, but where's the honor in that?
Not an honorable world anymore, kid, like I said. Big family from New York walked in and wiped their feet all over my carpet.
Let's restore a little bit of that honor.
As you say.
I'll be in touch.
I'll be waiting. As you turn to make your way up, oh, one more thing. Next time you come by, there will be no more special. So don't ask for it. Even if you didn't squeeze the information out, that's gonna be off the menu. Next time, you're gonna ask for the club. Extra olives.
Deal.
Get out of here.
I'll head out.
Okay, so as you leave, make your way out through the diner. As you're passing by the deli counter, the man that originally greeted you holds out a wrapped up parcel with a sandwich inside. As the door chimes and you walk out front, what's going through your head?
Lucas is at an impasse because on one hand, he he wants to do this on his own. And he's getting a little annoyed at everybody being in his business. And it's not a place that he is used to having people be involved in still, even as long as he's been in this pack. So he is thinking about what options he's really going to talk about. And also, how hard would it be for him to disappear to New York, which he is not sure is going to be very easy at all?
Okay. So with new challenges, but new possibilities in front of you, that's where we'll go to a quick break. We'll be back in just a few minutes. See you shortly.
St. Petersburg By Night is brought to you through collaborations with our partnered vendors. Wolfpack Dice, Ember Fox Dice, Dragon Ink Dice, Bear of the Bard, Champs Tramps, Panchi Artista, and Chromatic Creations US. Links to our partnered vendors, as well as our Twitch and YouTube channels, can be found on our website, stpetebynight.com. The official theme song for St. Petersburg By Night is Vampire by Faith and Failure. You can find them at faithandfailure.com. You can follow SPBN on all socials with the hashtag St. Pete By Night. If you wish to support our program, you can do so at kofi.com/stpetebynight to help keep the stories rolling.
And we're back. In the first half, we got to know a little bit more about Jace and the connections he's made since he arrived in Tampa. We saw Aspen get her hands a little bit dirtier as she dug more into the underground affairs of Lucas and started to maybe do a little bit of micromanaging of the affairs of the pack, all in an effort to further distract herself from the emotional unpacking she should be doing. Jester is doing a little bit more book club work to try and increase her intelligence, to become a better writer, but also doing a little bit of emotional unpacking herself in an attempt to better understand how to connect with Aspen in this time of need, but also learning a bit more about Charles and growing closer to him and helping him learn to get in touch with his more emotional side. Also, Lucas starts to make his underground connections as he reaches out to a crime family that has been dormant for many years in Tampa, but might be ready to reemerge on the scene. Now, in the second half, we find ourselves in a park in the outskirts of Tampa, where Jester and Aspen have met up to do a little bit of spiritual cleanup work, trying to help benefit the spirits of the greater Tampa area by continuing the good work that Jester has been doing these past few weeks of just cleaning up and helping the spirits of the wild, while also maybe having some time to connect as friends and maybe for Jester to try and widen that crack that has started to form in Aspen's emotional armor. As the two of you meet, it is a warmer day. It's starting to warm up as winter gets a little deeper in and it's getting towards the beginning of spring. It has been a little cloudier outside, rain coming and going throughout the few days that have passed, but it is a nice enough day to be outside and doing some cleanup, although the ground is a little bit, you know, there are puddles and it's a little bit soppy in some areas. There's still enough that can be done as you move your way through the park, uh, picking up a little bit of trash here and there and trying to make do of doing a little bit of cleanup work. So as we begin, the scene is yours.
So how's the whole lawyer thing going?
Good. It's going well. Uh, looked at some places with Charles, so um, have an idea of where we're going next with that. Um, I'm just taking it step by step, a little at a time with everything else we have going on. Trying to make sure everything stays in order.
Yeah, I get that. Um. It is pretty busy with, uh, all the things going on, like like this whole leech group is a lot bigger than I first thought it was gonna be. There's like nine of them. That's crazy.
Well, I mean, you pun not intended, uh, killed it with Mary and all of the problems there on the boat, so I think you guys will do just fine.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Um, I'm honestly, like, so one, I'm thinking about going to talk to the bikers and like tell them that we got Mary, like, without saying it's Mary, but we got the one that killed Ryder. I think they'd be happy to hear that, really. They miss him a lot, so. Um, but I might actually ask what they've heard, like on the streets and stuff, since like it might be useful to figure out, since they have more of an air to like actual streets, community wise than we do, they might like know if the leeches, what they're trying to do, if anything, at least on a whole human level, maybe?
Yeah, I think that's smart. Um, Lucas and I actually went down there recently, um, and talked to them about his whole underground thing he's got going. Uh, so maybe take Lucas with you. Maybe you can, uh, push that narrative with him, with the bikers.
Maybe.
I mean, I think I got through to him, but we'll see what happens.
Yeah, yeah. I could take him. So also maybe thinking you can take Jace. But I might find a different way to get to know Jace.
I mean, that's always a good plan, too. I guess we could all go, or you and Lucas can go, or you and Jace can go, or you and Jason Lucas can, however it shines out. Um. Yeah, I think it's a good idea, though. I think, uh, getting Lucas more close to them would be a good idea.
I am suddenly loving the idea of all of us going, including Charles. That would be hilarious.
I would definitely be there if you brought troubles, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna make this happen.
Sounds like a plan.
It's forming.
You know, um, and with the whole Lucas thing, um, getting him to schmooze up to them and get closer with them, so he doesn't become a hitman for hire would be a good idea.
No, no, back that up. What?
So his plan, from what I could follow, was to find a family that was part of the underground, uh, talk to them and maybe, you know, if they need somebody to disappear, then he could do that, get in good with them, and then start working with them and all of that. I don't know. Um. Yeah, so from what I got, mercenary hitman potential at least once, and then go from there. But, uh, he's gathering information on it yet, so, or so far, so we'll see. We'll see where his head's at next time I talk to him.
Okay. I okay, I'm gonna be honest. I really don't know anything about crime families, except for like, you know, watching Goodfellas and The Godfather, so, um, that's about it. So I can't really say what's realistic and what's not, but like, aren't the people like that are on the outside of the family always like on the outside, like they're not gonna be able to really control things?
Like, that was a point I made, um, from what little I know about it as well. Like I have my crime knowledge, but not in the same way that being a part of a crime family would give you information on, but that was a point I made, so. Um, I'm, I don't know, hopefully he'll, he'll lean into the bikers and work with them, maybe, because we already have a relationship with them.
Yeah. I mean, might be good to, like, when we get information, maybe help set them up that they fill in whatever hole this leech group is trying to take over, so that like there's not another group of leeches that comes in and tries to take over the area or something.
Yeah, and they had, uh, they had mentioned that Ryder was kind of helping them get out of the shit hole of it all, I guess you could say. Um, so they'd like to, you know, find a way out of that. So I think it's mutually beneficial and, uh, puts a foot in the door for Lucas without, uh, potentially having us in a worse situation.
Yeah.
But all that to be said is, yeah, take Lucas with you to the bar. But if we all, if Charles goes, I'll go with you.
Okay.
Um, yeah. So you just sit out here cleaning?
Um, cleaning, also, I mean, technically it rains, so I don't need to do it now, but usually I bring like spring water or uh, things like that and water some of the plants and things. I'll bring food, like fresh berries or um, nuts and things like that, and spread it along for the animals here.
Okay, that makes sense. Doing the whole getting in better with the spirits as we knew and also
Yeah.
Jason told us.
Yeah, he did. Um, I actually want to talk to him about, like, he mentioned something about mangroves. I want to figure out what that's all about. Um, maybe that's a first step that we can, or a further step we could take to actually, you know, start winning some over.
Yeah, that's an excellent idea. I think anything we can do to get the spirits back in their good graces is good work, so.
Yeah.
Which, uh, on that note, um, I know I had mentioned the Bateman thing to you. And, uh, you know, part of the whole lawyer thing is to have a space in that realm. Um. Have you had any thought on potentially wanting to be a bigger part of that?
Well, um, yes, honestly, I don't think I'm ready to get in contact with him at any point yet. Okay. So you have to understand, I was taken by surprise at that party. Charles and Matthias didn't tell me he was gonna be there at all. So, you know, in the moment, when I was face to face with him, talking to him, I was really concentrating on not ripping his jaw off. And, um, I kind of spouted out, when he asked what I did for a living, I kind of spouted out the first thing that popped in my head, which was a little close to what I used to do, but I said I was a journalist. I'm not a journalist. So at this point, I am looking into journalism courses so I can learn more, at least to keep up the appearance.
I don't think that's too far off from your expertise anyways. I mean, you tell stories, you, you know, in, or in that space a lot. It's just putting it down on paper and making it sound flowery and
Yeah.
And exciting.
There's like some skill to it, and I've never been great at school, so I am trying it. And I have Chloe to help me and Charles has been a huge help in teaching me to write better and we started a book club.
I'm honestly surprised. I didn't see, uh, Charles is a teacher. I didn't think he had the patience. I mean, trainer, absolutely. Teacher, I don't know.
It's the same for him.
Oh, okay. And now I see it. I get it. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Um, but when Matthias gets back, because he's bringing the reinforcements, which I want to get into a little bit too, since we're here. And I can bounce some ideas off of you, since Lucas is all in his, uh. Crime boss space and. Uh, well, I don't really know Jason that well, um. But yeah, when Matthias gets back after he figures out the reinforcements. I was thinking I would talk to him about what we could do, his advice on, on getting into those spaces a little bit better, what. He knows about the inner, um. Politics and that. And with the schmoozing and the, you know.
Yeah, definitely, um. Definitely, I'll, I wanna be there, talk to him too, cause I'd love some advice on that.
Yeah, absolutely, maybe I'll take you with me, cause I also have to tell him about the other Karen, which he's gonna be. Estatic about, yeah, it's gonna be wonderful.
Yeah, well, you know, at least tell him the truth on what happened.
That's the plan, I mean, that was the whole thing after the trial was keeping each other informed, regardless of what the situation is, so. I think it's gonna be for the best that I tell him everything and what we're looking at now. I just gotta wait till he gets back, cause he is busy doing the good work for us, so.
Yeah. I get it, so. New pack, huh?
Yeah, um, I'm hopeful about it and I'm sure. I mean, I would assume that they're capable, so they could probably take some of the. The problems off of our hands, at least the smaller ones, while they're still getting acclimated, um, so that'll be. Really helpful, I think, for all of us, as we kind of delve into. Just a couple focus things, instead of a bunch of having our fingers in everything. But, uh, that means we gotta start thinking about actually how we're gonna run a sept. Because, yeah, we have a sept, but it's really been a pack, one, a one-pack sept, so that's a little bit more simple.
Yeah, does get a little more complicated, I guess. Ooh.
Yep, we're gonna have to figure all that out, and have you thought about any roles that you're wanting?
Hmm. No, to be honest.
Do you, do you know most of the roles, or?
I know some of them, yeah.
Cause I think, I think you would do really good as a, a talesinger.
Yeah, definitely, um, that's a good one, I like that one.
I think it would be advantageous for all of us to have roles, sept roles, that way, when the new pack does come in, they know who they need to go to for said things, instead of. Uh, just. Coming to one of us, or, you know, none of us, so.
Right.
Could I have you both roll me a wits and insight minus two? As you're both actively locked in conversation, this is kind of a passive role. And you are at one rage, just to clarify. Okay. Aspen, with your one success versus Jester's zero success. You get. Just a, uh. A strange kind of like. Shiver up your spine. Just a, just a tingle.
Like a, like a.
You know that, that weird sensation like you're being watched? Kind of like that, but like idle, just, just a weird kind of like unnerving like.
Okay, then I will just kind of look over my shoulder, just like passively, as you're.
Give me a wits and awareness.
Ooh.
Okay, as you're looking around, uh, you don't see anybody, there's nobody around in the vicinity, uh, but something does catch your eye. Uh, at the base of a tree, you see some bright colorful flowers. Growing at the base of a tree. Kind of starting to grow up the base of a tree, along some vines that seem to be crawling along the edge of the tree.
Do they look out of place, or just pretty flowers?
Roll me an intelligence and science check.
Much better at that role, thank you. Can I add my earth science to it?
Sure.
Sweet. Four.
They are out of place, they are invasive and not native to this area. Uh, as you look at them, you can see that they have bright purple kind of stems, like bright purple flower petals. And on the petals themselves, they have these black, kind of like, almost like slitted irises. On the petals.
Hey, Jester?
Yeah.
So you, you clean up here often, yes?
Mm-hmm.
Have these been here?
Well, look at what she's pointing at.
You follow her gaze towards these flowers that appear to be growing at the base of this tree.
Have they, have I seen them before?
If you have, they didn't catch your attention, like maybe?
Um, I don't know, maybe, they never caught my attention before.
Science isn't really a thing?
Well, I mean, I do have, uh. A specialty in science.
In what?
Uh, environmentalism.
Oh, um, I would say. Yeah, I would say this probably doesn't necessarily apply, cause it's not any kind of pollution or anything, it's just a plant, so.
Right.
You probably have just mistaken it as another plant, and there's also signs everywhere that says like invasive species or. A thing in Florida, so it's not that unusual, um.
Right.
Yeah, you wouldn't have thought probably anything of it.
Um, maybe? Um, there's a lot of invasive species in Flor- in Florida, so.
Do you wanna leave it, or?
I mean.
I mean, if we're trying to help spirits, I didn't know if we should dig it up for the tree.
Oh. I mean, um. Like, how close is it to the tree?
It's actually like clinging to the side of the tree, it's starting to grow, it's way up the side of the tree.
Yeah, it's probably not great for the tree.
Now, they do in, in parks have people whose job that is, like that's.
Yeah. Usually there are people in the parks, like their job is to help, like, take care of the trees like that, but, I mean. At the same time, we are trying to help spirits and maybe helping this tree might. Help that, so.
Yeah, whatever you think, I mean, you've been doing this much longer, so, I just. I don't know, caught my eye. I am gonna go pick a flower off of it, though.
Okay.
Actually, I, yeah, I'm gonna take a look like how we could help safely like remove it from the tree without harming the tree.
Um. Give me a wits and investigation.
Okay.
And you wanna take one of the flower, like pick one of the flowers off?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, give me a stamina and resolve.
Three.
Okay, as you reach down and pluck the. Flower, like you go around, you pick the base of it and pop it off, you feel a small stinging sensation. Like, you know how some of those have those like little burrs or barbs at the base of the flower, you feel like it, it almost like. Bites into your fingers as you pluck it off, uh. Roll me a. Roll me another wits and insight, this time with your full pool.
I got three successes.
Okay. Uh. It looks like you probably could, uh, it looks like there are thorns that are kind of poking into it. Into the, the bark of the tree, you could, you'd probably want gloves, uh, to peel it back off and you. You might need to like pry it out a little bit at a time to un, kind of peel it away from the tree and dig it out. Of the ground, but it is possible to do, sure.
Um, I'd say usually probably with like. Some of the cleanup and stuff, I definitely have gloves and probably some tools, so, like, maybe a. A spade and maybe some shears or something, okay. Um, then I'm gonna attempt to do that.
Okay, uh, what'd you get on that insight check there, Aspen?
Three.
Okay. So, yeah, you, you pl- plucked it away, no actual damage done as you, but it did kind of sting a little bit. As you picked it away, uh, did you continue to pull it out, like actually finish plucking it, or did you let it go as it stung?
I probably would have.
Okay.
Like I would have like pulled it out.
As you pull it out, and then you look at it. The irises that are on each of the stem, like on each of the petals, are now closed.
Okay, as I see that, I'm gonna go, uh, Jester?
Like the slitted irises, like almost like cat's eye irises?
As she's putting gloves on?
Uh. The flower is blinking.
Yeah, no, flowers aren't supposed to do that.
Yeah, I didn't think so, and I'm just gonna kind of drop it.
Hmm, no, 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 I'll pull out like a plastic bag, like one of the little trash, put it in here. No, I'll open the bag for, just put it in the bag.
So like pick it up by the, the pedal this time and like carefully stick it in there.
Okay.
You, you think this is what Lucas was talking about?
I guess.
That lady? He was talking about she had like invasive, like weird plants?
Probably, probably, we should, probably, I don't know, take it back to Lucas, ask him, I don't. Plants aren't supposed to blink, I don't know if we carry it around and it becomes a problem, uh, also, Eliza's not here, so I can't see if it's some weird. Stuff on the other side, so, uh, and I didn't bring the shades, yeah.
Let's get it off the tree and put it in a bag, and yeah, let's contact Lucas and Eliza about it.
Okay.
Okay, so to remove the plant successfully from the tree, I'm gonna need a dexterity and science roll to.
Okay.
Extract it without potentially harming the tree itself.
Cool, cool, um.
Aspen, you can assist if you would like to, I'll allow you to add an extra die to her pool.
You have a bigger pool than me, I'm sure, so.
Um, first of all, though, I'm gonna roll for ancestors.
Okay.
There had to be some horticulturalists or something that were Garu. I got two successes, so I can get, add two dice.
Okay.
Um, does environmentalism count?
I would say it does, yeah, because that's usually about trying to preserve the nature by finding a way to extract some sort of invasive or. Toxic thing, so I would say that can count on this case, yeah.
Okay.
Knowledge how to safely remove something without doing further damage to a natural substance, I would say that definitely applies.
Awesome, I got five successes.
Yes, so you are able to safely kind of plucking each thorn out of the tree. Unwind it from the tree itself, pulling them back. As you do. Pluck it out. The irises on the remaining buds do seem to blink with each thorn that you pluck out.
Wasn't there like, like an old horror movie about plants? I don't remember the name of it, but like, this is really starting to give me those vibes.
Yeah, yep. Um. I'd, we just throw it in the bag, I guess.
Yeah.
As you have the coiled up. Plant and go to place it in the bag. All of the flower's irises turn to stare at you and watch you as they drop into the bag.
Maybe we double bag it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay.
On a box, maybe, we, we should buy a box.
Probably, yeah.
Um.
Can both of you give me a composure and resolve check, please?
I would spend a willpower. Three successes.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna ride with my three.
Okay. So, both of you are gonna have unnerving dreams when you go to bed tonight. Paranoid dreams, but you're not gonna take any. Damage from them, but they are going to be unnerving, kind of, you're being watched. Or chased, or some things like staring at you dreams throughout the night. Which are gonna make it kind of restless, but not enough to do any kind of willpower damage. Okay, so bagging up the plants and tying them off.
See, this is what I mean when we get the other pack here, and they can do creepy eyeball plants.
Right? This is creepy eyeball plants, though. Probably going to run in this a lot more, that sucks.
And if we make Lucas keeper of the land, then he can be in charge of them taking care of the creepy eyeball plants, see? It all kind of works together.
Oh, that's, that, yeah, okay, I can see how that works, uh. Speaking of creepy eyeball plants and honestly, Lucas talking about these plant, or plants. Um, and Piney Point, I found the report. When they were investigating ten years ago.
Okay.
Um, I can bring it to you soon, I don't have it with me at the moment, but I, uh. Yeah, so Ballard Anderson and Bateman and Endron and Piney Point, they were all connected back then. Like, all deep in each other's, like, helping each other out, kind of like, apparently it was a Karen for Black Spiral Dancers. Who were working with the, uh, leeches to take out the pack, or the sept.
Okay, so. Oh, hold on. So, leeches.
Mm-hmm.
Which Bateman included. Uh, Black Spiral Dancers. Weird company, Lucas said?
Yeah. Endron, definitely.
Right.
The Endron was like in the report a lot, like Endron. Owned the holding company that owned Piney Point.
Yeah, I know about Endron, I had my own issues with them, but, um, okay.
Ballard Anderson and Bateman was doing some pro bono work for Endron. Ballard Anderson and Bateman was doing some pro bono work for Endron. Even though they had another lawyer firm for the holding company, which is weird, but yeah, um, but then at the same time, apparently there were black spiral dancers that were also attacking the sept that were working with the leeches and their cairn was at Piny Point. And that's where this weird wormhole thing was that I was talking about.
Okay, so all good things to bring up at the next pack meeting. Um, that report would probably be good, I can look into um dealings uh between Bateman and Endron and see what's going on there or see if I can get any more information. Um. Okay, uh, black spiral dancers, so we've got Lucas Underground, we've got New Guy, we've got black spiral dancers, we've got leeches, we've got plants with eyeballs and we've got potentially another grandmother Willow out there that is a problem.
What?
Yeah, we didn't really get to get into my uh patron thing, um, grandmother Willow talked to me and she says there's another version of her out there somewhere and uh it's not like her, it is corrupt and it needs to be taken care of, so that's another thing we've gotta deal with. Good thing we have Jason.
Yeah.
And reinforcements coming, because that's but I think we can, we can handle it, we'll be okay, like it's just, we got it.
Sure. We'll handle it, Aspen.
Yeah, yeah, we'll handle it.
Hey. So as you head back to the vehicle, having finished up cleanup with the bag full of whatever this plant is, double bagged, tied off, unnerved by what you saw and experienced, climb back into the vehicle, lot of new questions and a lot, and I mean a lot, of potential obstacles to face in the future. But Jester, you know all about obstacles. And those obstacles that she listed off, in the grand scheme of things, that's not the biggest obstacle you're facing. Biggest obstacle you're facing is the one in the driver's seat, because if that one can't be overcome, you're not gonna be able to conquer the rest, and you know that. We transition now to our final scene of the evening. Lucas and Dreams, you were given the address by Charles of this safe house hideout that the leeches have apparently been using, or at least this small hive of leeches have been using. This hive that Charles has been staking out for the last couple of weeks. Now, he believes that this is a small pack that have been hunting the nearby neighborhood and have been kind of terrorizing it ever since the food supply's been cut off and with the death of Bloody Mary, there's no law to keep things in order, so they've gotten kind of messy and kind of reckless and have been causing a little bit of terror in the area. So as you arrive, I'm guessing using Lucas's truck, or are you meeting there?
Meet him there, I don't know him like that yet.
Okay, so picking a location nearby, Dreams, you arrive on your motorcycle, Lucas in your truck. I'm guessing you pick a spot a couple of blocks away. You're definitely on the outskirts of downtown near a rundown neighborhood, which is not all that surprising, a lot of tenement housing or, you know, more unkempt neighborhoods, houses that definitely are in need of repair or foreclosed upon. But you arrive, are you arriving during the day or the evening? What's your plan of attack here?
Evening if we're gonna get the best bead on leech activity, I think the same thing.
So we're thinking dusk?
Yeah.
So arriving at sundown, I'll say you meet up at a seven eleven gas station just a few blocks away from the location of the address that you were given. Jace, your motorcycle pulls into the parking lot where you see this beat up old pickup truck that Lucas is waiting in, and the scene is yours.
Get off the bike, uh, put his helmet onto the side, lock everything up, go and knock on the window. He'll make his way around and hop in. Evening.
What's up, New Guy?
Sup, it's just Lucas, right?
Yeah, Lucas is fine.
Alright, just Lucas, got it. Alright, just Lucas, do you want a slurpee before we do this? Because
I really depends on what flavors they have.
I'll be right back, I'll run in there real quick.
Okay, so they have a wild blueberry, they have uh Mountain Dew, of course, uh, they have cherry Pepsi, uh, regular Pepsi, uh, they have code red Mountain Dew, uh. That's it, they're they're pretty stocked, it's a seven eleven, they've got a a pretty good array, this is what they do, this is their business.
Gonna buy one of each, then walk out. I'd
Open the door for him.
You said flavors, so I don't know if you like to mix.
Uh, so variety is the spice of life, alright, awesome.
Okay, um. Do you get any additional information about what we're about to step into?
Um, no, it's leeches, so um, expect the typical bullshit. Uh, they're gonna be exploiting the area around them, they're gonna be up to something they shouldn't be up to and they're generally marginally good at watching their own back, so.
As leeches do.
As leeches do.
Okay. Um, a contact of mine had uh let me know that some things, weird things have been happening in the areas. Might be what this is, um, they didn't go into great detail just to be aware, so it's starting to catch the eyes of other people as well.
What kind of stuff?
Um. Just stuff that it shouldn't be happening, that's all I can really say about it.
It's fair. Alright, well, your expertise were the reason you got picked for this, so what's the story?
As far as what?
How do you wanna go about doing this?
Well, um. First, we gotta figure out where exactly they're at, but we can quietly check out the areas, usually you can um usually leeches, especially uh dumb ones will leave some form of trail, usually something left behind. Find that, we can track that into wherever we're going. But that's not necessarily where I am are on making sure we're gonna be somewhat hidden for what we're doing. I have a keen eye to find things that are lost.
Okay, that's a new one. Uh, let's grab a couple of slurpees and just be a couple of people just out walking around, how about that?
Sounds good, um, when we get a little bit further, I just got a little something we can do and it shouldn't take too long.
Alright, we'll take the truck.
Yeah, uh, I'm assuming you have a driver's license? I actually don't care, you're good.
That's great on both of those, okay.
Okay, so as you drive down the street, getting closer to the location, eventually, how close do you wanna get?
Probably about a block away.
Okay, so I would say getting to the intersection a block away from the location. It is a two-story building on a corner the next block up, you can actually even make eyesight from the, from the corner up of the location, it's a two-story building, it's got a fence, a big chain link fence that's about eight or nine feet tall that seems to encircle the property otherwise, uh, it looks like they have tarps or you know, fence panels that have been put up along the fencework itself, blocking eyesight uh of the backyard from the property from the outside, so it's hard to see anything that's going on in the backyard. All of the windows have either been grease painted or shuttered, uh, a lot of it looks like the glass has been broken uh or, you know, has been sealed up altogether, uh, but yeah, it's just kind of a rundown old house, old two-story house. Otherwise to tell, there's no lights visible from the outside.
Right, you ready to go walk?
Um, yeah, then let me just get some things ready, going to climb out of the uh truck, grab a couple slurpees and then set them on the ground, I'd like to activate uh penumbra senses, wanna see what's going on here.
So as you open up your senses, attuning yourself to the sight that is beyond, your vision starts to blur, taking on that photo negative over a photo view, looking to the sight beyond sight. This area, much like it looks like in the world, is an element of decay. You can see that the worm is ever-present here, the worm and the weaver work in harmony here. The worm has eaten away much of what was once probably a weaver paradise. Structures that were built, longstanding homes, streets that are now cracked and broken, sidewalks that are, you know, s- slowly crumbling away. Everything here is mostly made of web and spider, but there are crumbling remains. And it looks like a lot of it has been chewed on, gnawed on, gnarled on. It is broken and battered, even worse so on the other side than on this side. However, it is not unpopulated, so go ahead and roll me a wits and awareness.
Three.
Okay, looking beyond. You don't see any animals or living creatures on this side as much as you do see on the other side. You see a couple of raven or carrion birds flying overhead, circling overhead, as if they're ready to feast on the remains of something down below, but you also see a spirit of a black cat walking along a broken fence line. Kind of foot over foot padding just along the edge, top of the fence line, as if it's like walking a tightrope.
Hey, uh, Lucas, can you make sure that I'm not bothered for just a couple minutes?
I guess you do your thing.
Going to call out to the uh black cat, it's like the little uh call to a cat, come here, come on.
At first, it kind of looks around. Give me a, let's go with either manipulation or charisma and occult, strangely enough.
Okay. Yeah, we'll keep it, uh, two.
Okay, so projecting your presence, pushing it as much as you can beyond the veil, trying to really make your your presence known uh to the other side. Eventually, those very sharp yellowed eyes peer in the general vicinity of your direction, and the head cocks and the tail flicks. Interesting.
Hello?
You know who you're walking with?
Um, the point towards Lucas, that guy?
You walk with storms.
Interesting, okay. Yeah, that's a big guy.
You walk with homewreckers. But not you. You haven't done any damage yet, yet, and the cat kind of rolls its way off the fence and just flops down onto its back, still staring at you, its eyes still having not lost eye contact with you. What do you want?
Well, my associate and I here, we're gonna be doing some things that we don't necessarily want to be um seen, and I was hoping that especially someone like you, so graceful and elegant and able to walk places without being seen or heard, would help us out a little bit. Do something like, but I wouldn't do it for free, I won't, I want, I want to give you something, so name it, what is it you need?
Hmm, aren't you a sweet talker?
I have my moments.
Cat arches its back and stretches its paws out. Hmm, why here? This place is ruined. Where do you wish to go here?
Kind of look past the cat, point towards the building with the sh- uh, broken windows and the greased out, like that building looks like it needs a little bit of help. That's, that's why. Yes, but where death also resides, life can also be present.
Hmm. So you think you can bring life back to this place?
That is my goal, um, this place has been heavily overtaken by haha, uh, a lot, but it's not completely lost, I still have hope that it can be saved, there's still glimmers of hope here. No matter how shallow, how shallow they are, they shine through and with a little bit of help, this place could shine like it used to.
You know you're talking to a cat and you are a rat?
Yes.
That doesn't make you uncomfortable?
Not necessarily, just cuz you are a cat and I being of the rant does not mean we cannot work in tandem together as a spirit and one who speaks with the spirits. Talking amongst each other is how we're going to be able to fix this. As a predator to prey, I'm trying to be as cordial as I can.
Okay. We can deal. You want to go unseen, yes?
Yes, that is, that is the goal. Yes, that is, that is the goal.
Do you know what I want? What do you think I would want?
Well, being a cat, there can be several different things, it's something like a cat would want.
Hmm, you're a spirit speaker, what would it be?
Are you wanting some form of enrichment, are you wanting some thrill?
What do you think?
Most likely being a cat. Don't see a whole lot of things for you to be able to chase or bounce around here.
It has been quite boring.
There's a lot of those guys up there, kinda hard to get to. Okay. So you just wanna have a little game, right?
I do like games.
Yeah, if I'm able to get them to come down. You help us out. If not. I'll owe you one.
Hmm. I like this, but. You're able to get them down, and if not, you owe me. Two. Cuz there's two of you.
You do strike a good bargain, no, that is fair, if it was one for one, I'd understand there are two of us. I get two of them down here, to come down. Our deal, we have struck an accord.
Wonderful.
Okay, alright. Give me a second, gonna grab some of these slushes we haven't drank yet. And try and pour them down, trying to get an overall sense to what is going on above and then try to. Get them to lure to come down.
Okay, give me a manipulation and. Subterfuge.
Three.
Okay, so as you. Coax. The spirits of the buzzards attempting to draw their energy using your own. To kind of pull them in with the sense of the sickly sweet, the sugary. The sensations. You kind of put some of your own energy into it and project the sense upwards, passing, you know, beyond. Into the umbra, sending it upwards, you see. The carrion birds. Kind of tighten up in their circle. Spiraling closer and closer more curiously, coming down a little bit closer. And closer, investigating. The cat. Kind of backs up. Behind the fence. And crouches down. Into the shadows. The birds come down. And investigate, but then. Start to rise up again. Higher into the sky. The cat eventually pokes its head out. Sorry, spirit speaker.
Well. The deal was for them to come down, I never specified how far. Therefore, they had, they did come down, I never said directly to the ground. And you agreed that if they did come down, you would help us both.
And I never specified how far they had to come down either.
This is also true.
And I never specified what I'd help with either.
Ah. A fault on both of our ends as far as trying to get the specifics out.
I'll tell you what. This was fun.
This was fun.
And you did entertain me, you'll owe me one. And I'll give you. Your light foot. Deal?
Deal. Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
I welcome calling.
Oh, I have no doubts about that.
Run along.
Will do. Turn off the, the senses.
You both have plus two dice to any stealth checks for the remainder of the scene.
Alright, um.
You also have the gift cat feet for the rest of the scene as well.
Okay, um, Lucas, we have, um, at least for the time being. Uh, the blessing of a wonderful little black cat, um, but I have to do something to. Your boots before I can do anything else, though.
What, what do you have to do to my boots?
Well, the way that it works is I have to take something, cuz we're gonna be walking on the ground, so I have to take the ground that's been blessed, and then I have to rub that. All this mud I've created at this point onto the boots, so that way we can be a little bit more silent, it's the way that this works, it's a spirit thing, I. I just speak for him.
The slurpee mud is the spirit thing.
Well, I had to have them bless something in order to have this work.
Guess, slurpees, fine, yeah, yeah, sure, okay, yeah, fine.
Okay, go over, grab some of them, go to his boots and just throw them down on it, alright. Just rub that in a little bit, yeah, there we go.
That's so sticky, alright.
Yeah, uh, Windex or something on that thing, right, yeah, let's go.
Okay.
Okay. So. Go ahead and make dexterity and stealth checks to approach.
You are rage one?
Yes, actually, I'll give you a rage too, because you are going into dangerous territory, so you probably would be a little bit more on edge.
Four.
Five with a crit.
Okay, as you move. Using the shadows as cover, it almost feels like the shadows move with you. The shadows of the fence line seem to cover you, covering your path as you make your way closer towards the building on the corner. Finding a good position to hunker down and observe, you watch and about an hour after dark. The house almost comes alive. Figures start to emerge from the house, almost like ants from an anthill. First one. Then two. Then a pair. And as they do, they break off in various directions, heading off away from the home. Moving off down streets, some of them head off into a car driving away. And as they emerge, they just kind of go off. In a very predatory manner. Off to hunt. You count about five of them that leave the domicile. Charles had given you a report that he had counted nine.
Are there any cameras?
Give me a wits and investigation. I will say it is pitch black, there is no light.
I'll take out my sunglasses on a tip from an old friend, and I will turn on my Eyes of the Owl.
Okay.
Three successes.
Okay, uh, you do not see any cameras, no, this is not that sophisticated.
I mean, did you count coming out?
Five.
And suit said, what, nine?
Nine, yeah. No cameras either, so. That's. A bonus, but also a negative, I can tap into cameras from here.
Oh, cool.
That's a little trick.
Uh, can, do we see any like easy access points, like anything via the roof or the wall, like anything large enough to be able to like crawl into if we needed to get inside? Other than the door?
There are some windows on the second floor, however, they are boarded over. The best access way that you can visibly see would be the front door. Uh, there are probably doors in the backyard, as you did see, uh, one of the individuals. Scale the fence from the backyard, come out from the backyard and scale over the fence. Uh, so there is likely a back door, but you can't visibly see it from the position you're in.
Alright, so I see at least two are two entry points that we're aware of, other than the windows, uh, which can get through, but got those boards on it. And it's on the second floor, I don't know about you, but I can't necessarily jump that high.
I could get up there.
Okay, um, the boards are still an overall issue. Are you wanting? And loud, are you wanting to check inside and see what's going on there, there are potentially four additional if. The intel was, that was given was correct. I don't know the guy, but I assume he can count to nine.
Four is a decent amount. I could get over the fence really easily, I could get up to the second floor very easily. But that's not gonna net us anything unless we can actually get inside, and I think that steps outside the bounds of what we're here for. So do you got any other tricks up your sleeve?
Uh. The extent of the tricks for this, uh, was about what you have on your boots right now.
Uh, a little light B and E it is, that's.
Light, maybe just appear in?
Yeah, that's strangely enough what I'm pretty good at. Alright, let's head over there, around back, away from the street.
Okay, so you're going to approach the backyard, is that the plan, is to get in through the backyard, okay? So it is one of those houses that there is an alleyway through the backyard, it's kind of a dirt. Ground, like dirt and gravel alleyway where the dump trucks or the garbage trucks will go down and pick up these dumpsters. From the back alleyway so that they don't have to wheel out garbage, you know, garbage bins to the curb. They just kind of take their trash out to the back alley, throw it in there, and then the garbage trucks can just go around the back alley to. Take out the trash from the various residences, uh, it's very overgrown. And hasn't been used in quite some time, but it is accessible, uh, this chain link fence goes all the way around the back of the property. Uh, and it looks like it has been sealed off, there may have been a gate at one point, but it's been heavily chained off. Uh, and not been used in some time, you can see that there's overgrowth that has kind of gone up the chain links. Uh, over the side of the fence, but you do successfully also keep your stealth checks, sneak into the back alleyway behind the property.
Get over this fence, you think you can?
Uh. Yeah, yeah, I've climbed a few fences in my day.
Or would you rather just hole down here and let me go take a look?
I, I'm okay with doing, being watch, that's fine, uh, I'll hold the ground here.
Yeah, alright. I'll turn, take a look at the fence and then do hair sleep.
Okay, so go ahead and roll it.
Uh, rage check is good. Three successes.
Alright, so calling upon spirit of the hair, you feel the muscles in your legs. Tense and strengthen, and with a spring, you leap up and over the top of the fence. Landing quietly and snugly on the other side. The backyard is a mess of brambles and bushes and weeds, probably crawling upwards of. Four or five feet tall, uh, you could see that some of them have been trampled down, most likely. The leeches that have come through this backyard or made their way through the backyard at one point or another, but for the most part, it is. Horribly overgrown and untended, uh, there is a back deck. Uh, several of the planks have been broken in, you can also see there is a. Back door, a wooden back door that is closed at the moment, uh, it has a. Glass pane window, though it looks like the glass pane has been shattered and boarded over, uh, it does look like there is. A deadbolt lock on the back door, uh, there's also some windows on the back, all of them boarded over.
So would you say that if where I'm at in the backyard, I'm, I'm concealed by?
I'd say for the most part, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to.
There's also a dinged up old, like rusted shed at the back of the yard.
I'm gonna shift down into lupus. To make myself smaller and less conspicuous.
Well, shift to lupus is free, you don't have to roll a rage check, so you could just, let's drop down to all fours into a slender. Sleek lupine form. You start stalking through the backyard, roll me a wits and awareness. Actually, make it wits and survival.
Two successes.
Okay. You smell blood. Very potently. You also smell very stale blood. With your survival check. You notice. The dug up or kind of disturbed section of earth near the shed. This is most definitely a mass grave. They have been burying bodies here.
Okay. I'll make my way a little bit closer to the house. Just to try to gather any more information that I can.
Okay, uh, roll me a wit's an investigation.
Four successes.
I would say, just to kind of summarize, as you sniff around the doors and windows. What you're able to determine, especially with your Eyes of the Owl, which is giving you night vision. These doors and windows are booby-trapped, uh, nothing fancy, but some rudimentary. Alarm type booby traps, like, uh, cans on strings or, you know, stuff that will make a lot of noise. If they are disturbed, uh, just very, very rudimentary. Obvious noise-making techniques that if the boards get broken in, if, you know, anything happens. It's going to alert the entire house, you know, it is going to make a lot of noise, they are clearly not afraid. Of, you know, anyone outside of the house hearing anything, probably because this neighborhood is so rundown. They're not worried about a police response or anything to this neighborhood, they want to be alerted if anything goes down. Um, also, you pick up a really strangely disgusting. disgustingly strong scent of sewage, which is out of place. Like profoundly strong, possibly backed up pipes, possibly plumbing issues, but it is strong and you can't necessarily locate the source of it.
It's for sure sewage.
Sewage.
Okay. Alright, I'll head back over to the growth and, uh, shift to Hamed and do another hair's leap back over the fence.
We'll make you roll it. Easy enough.
Uh, I'll land and kind of look at the grounds. It's really bad.
How, how bad is bad?
I'm pretty positive right on the other side of that fence. I just, let's, let's just walk. Let's just walk. We gotta keep, we gotta get moving.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, as we're walking, uh, it, I'm pretty sure right on the other side of that fence, they're burying a lot of bodies. A lot. It's reeks of old blood. So that gives us reason enough to do what we need to do at some point, in my opinion. Uh, we'll leave that up for a group discussion, but we're dealing with probably amateurs here. There's some really not high tech security. And the whole house stinks of sewage.
Okay.
So squatters. But they're not stupid. They've done a bit of security for themselves, but it's not high tech and not a classy operation by any stretch of the imagination.
Yeah, so what we know is at, at least, at least five. Uh, mass graves in the backyard. Rudimentary security.
Yeah, there's a shed in the backyard too. Uh, get a chance to check that out, but
Yeah, probably if they're digging, but I'm assuming that's probably where they're keeping the stuff to dig for the bodies.
Yeah, probably.
Okay, um, I'd say that's grounds to do something because at that point they're tainting the ground that's there.
Yeah.
And any kind of, uh, spirit that could possibly reside there is not, not happy with what's being done there.
Well, also the people that are in there.
Maybe, yeah.
Didn't deserve to be there, so that sewage smell though, that's odd. And why would they be backing up the pipes or whatever it is they're doing in there with that? That's the part that I can't connect. The rest of it makes sense for leeches. Shitty leeches. But leech is nonetheless.
Maybe it's part of their security, just add to the odor.
Maybe.
It's like the mask, what's going on in the back?
Trying to hide the smell of something else possibly. It's a good point.
Like if I was trying to put myself in their shoes, dead bodies is a little bit different of a smell than shit.
Yeah. Okay, uh, yeah, we gotta get this info back to the rest of them.
Anything else we need to do here? Like, since we're here, we have, we have the blessing of the cat. Anything else we need to do here?
Jason, if I stay in this place any longer, I'm gonna shift and rip a hole in that side of that building. We need to go now.
Alright, yeah, don't want that. Easy enough. Let's go.
Alright. The two of you head back to the 7-Eleven on the corner. This taste of slushies kind of now nauseously swirling around in your stomachs as nightmares flood your brains of what possibly could be going on in that house. How many bodies lie in that mass grave? What horrors await inside that house that itself that they would need such a horrible, horrible smell to cover it up? They didn't need that smell outside. They needed that smell inside. So what could possibly be waiting inside that would require that kind of smell? Only time will tell. Our story comes to a close tonight, but not without one last scene. We find ourselves at Piney Point in a large greenhouse where a blond haired woman in a pencil skirt walks down a line of large exotic plants. One of them is a large tree with vines encircling it with large blooming purple flowers. Large irises on the flowers tracing along, watching her every step, the sounds of her heels clattering on the tile as she passes by. She moves down to the end of the long corridor of plants, pushing through some double doors into a laboratory where she approaches a medical table where an individual lies upon the table. Good morning. I hope you slept well. She looks down at a terribly frightened individual. A young man, probably in his early twenties. Otherwise unremarkable, dirty face, patchwork clothing, somebody who you'd walk by on the street and probably not think twice about. Somebody who would go missing and nobody would miss. You are a part of a very, very important study. And what we do here today could be so important for the future. I hope you know that. So I want to thank you for all you're doing for us and for the future. The young man says something in Spanish desperately pleading as she goes over to a cabinet, opening the cabinet and withdrawing a jar from the cabinet. She unscrews the lid of the jar and reaches inside. And what she pulls out is a green twisting vine with thorns on the vine. And the vine starts to wiggle in her hand. She moves up to the man, clenching his jaw. Open up for the airplane. And she inserts the vine into his mouth, clamping his jaw shut. We pan to the outside of the greenhouse and all we hear are screams. And that is where our story comes to a close this evening. Thank you so much to these incredible players. Thank you to everybody watching at home. I know it was an extra long session tonight, but Rage Across Tampa is well on its way into season three, so stay tuned. We've got a lot, lot more on the way. If you haven't seen our Justin Akili interview from After Dark, After Dark is back, so go watch that on VOD. It's here on Twitch, but it's also over on YouTube. So go watch that. And in two weeks, we're gonna have another episode of After Dark with Vin Vox, a very, very popular streamer who has been in many, uh, World of Darkness products. So come watch that. Also, in a couple of weeks, we're gonna have the debut of our second Werewolf the Apocalypse stream called Hellhounds, which takes place in our Rage Across Tampa universe. It's our second werewolf pack. So come back for that and come check out that werewolf pack as the reinforcements from Hell Michigan come down to help out this sept. We'll just see what kind of help they actually provide. So come stay tuned for that. But there's so much coming to the channel, coming to the world of St. Pete by night. So come join us and stay up to date by following St. Pete by Night on all social media, or just join our community by joining at the Discord link down below. We would love, love, love to have you with us. But for these amazing players, I'm Kent. Thank you so much for watching and we'll see you next time. Have a lovely evening, everyone. Good night.
This has been a St. Petersburg By Night production. Rage Across Tampa is produced in agreement with the World of Darkness and Dark Pack. The storyteller for Rage Across Tampa is Kent. Tonight's characters were voiced by Preston, Champ, Nori, and Wox. Visit our website at stpetebynight.com for more information about all of our productions and how you can become a part of our community. Thank you for listening. Until next time, fangs, stakes, and claws out.